Thomas Dorm. We thought that would be a good lead into parks today. Matt is going to be down in a few minutes and he's going to give us an overview of the trails. Um, the trails plan. You send me the. Wait one second, we'll pull this up.
Speak of the devil, he appears.
Hey, hey. Yeah, one of the things that we talked about. While Matt's getting situated. One of the things that we've been talking about is whether or not parks and recreation. Um, should be, we have currently a public facilities chapter. Thought about combining that with parks and recreation. So there'd be parks, public facilities and cultural facilities like the library. In one chapter. Cause there's not a lot of public facilities. It's really any need to even say it. We're looking at that. It's really just.
Those is that like the wreck?
Yeah, that can be really talked about in respect to the parks and the. Um, right now it contains that whole chapter contains a some comments about. Descriptions of public works as a facility that they're in a different building like that matters for the general plan, probably not important. In the general planets taking up space. Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, give me one second guys. So we have, in addition to the general plans section on parks and recreation, there is a master plan. About a little bit in the past. Um, that's been in place since, I want to say twenty sixteen, is that right?
Most recent addition is the parks trails open space or park recreation open space trails. That's our creation trails, open space master plan. It was adopted in twenty one.
So then, yeah, our, our current general plan references a. Um, references a twenty sixteen plan that's supposed to go through twenty twenty six.
Your Jerry's supposed to be coming.
I was asked to look at, just present some information on trail system. And. I could talk a little bit about the parkers plan, but my main focus in planning, one of, one of many focuses of mine in planning is trail planning. Act transportation planning at work. Well, John Dorney and his transportation planning efforts. This plan was adopted in twenty one. This map is a little cluttered. Because it shows proposed trails and bike lanes. Looks like I got the wrong one. No, this is the right one, but it's also overlaid with existing. And then there's some other things on this map. This comes right out of the plan. Um, for instance, these light blue lines are sort of. Marked. Bike ways. Which we haven't really implemented any of those yet. Uh, if we have, it's been very limited. So it's a little bit of a cluttered map. Um, one way I like to look at the map and explain what. Is. A more simplified view. Of. Our backbone trail. System. And what we already have in place to some degree. Um. This illustrates our trails more like a subway map. You know, easily conceptualized in point A to point. Type of destinations. Um, some of the backbone trails are starting from the top Murdoch Canal Trail. You're probably familiar with that trail. If you're familiar with any facilities, just raise your hand and I'll dive into them a little bit more. This uh, Murdoch Canal Trail is a multi, what we call a multi-use trail that facilitates pedestrians, bicyclists. So this one's even. Question use. Uh, Bonneville Shoreline Trail. Which is up in the foot hills is primarily. Uh, mountain biking and. Destined or foot, you know, hiking. Trail. We have the uh, Provo River Trail which. Just touches Provo in the northeast corner, but is a major connector. At it has. Peripheral trail to Orem as it goes through Provo. Part of the overall network. The College Connector Trail is this orange trail. From the Provo border or south of Provo border to University Mall is a separated multi-use trail. It ends at the state street and. Uh, this isn't probably, probably needs to be dashed because it's a, it's a on-street bicycle facility with just typical sidewalks. Off the street. So it's not a combined use facility trail at that point. But it does serve as a major connection. Between existing trail facilities. This uh, circles around UVU and now with also the pedestrian bridge in place over the freeway makes a much safer route. For pedestrians and cyclists east to west across the freeway rather than University Parkway. Does have a connection, but. I don't want to take it. I haven't taken it yet. Yes, this is twelve south. Uh, this is planned, it does continue on over to sleepy ridge area and then um. We do a plan, a connection into this blue dash line is called. Has different names, but it's the Utah Lakeshore Trail. Sometimes people refer to it as the walk care away trail. But I think we're moving towards generally it's just calling it the Utah Lakeshore Trail. Um, this is funded from where it ends in Lake uh Vineyard. To south. Orem here, south of the industrial park. Is funded for a trailhead facility there too. We, and the property's already identified and uh. Paid for and. Ready to go. However, there are some major. Property. How do I say it?
Disputes.
Disputes. Uh, of ownership that um. Are still being worked out and um.
What's an example of that?
Well, a lot of the area was claimed by one or two different families. Uh, a title report conducted in this study process shows a lot of what they claimed was is not actually. In their fee title possession. Uh, and so now that I think there's some acceptance for. Saying, okay, we accept that maybe we don't. Uh, have claim or ownership of any of these state lands or federal lands or. Willing to transfer to the state. Uh, for this project if certain conditions are met. But uh, there's still some areas where the trail goes through which is under private ownership. And so there's. I don't remember, it's about six months since I went to the last meeting on this, but they're so, they even had a facilitator. Don't think they came to final conclusion based off my lap, the last.
The charge to make that happen.
So, like I said, the state legislature appropriated money for this project. And they have hi- uh, Utah County is actually leading the charge. They, they're. They've hired a consultant now, sub consultants to help negotiate this. Uh, planning, design, negotiation. Uh, Utah Lake Authority is taking a lot of the lead now too. Um. Peterson and his team. But again, they're still working through some of the final negotiations, which almost seem to be at a standstill right now, last I checked. But once we get some movement there, we'll be helping facilitate connections. Through our wastewater treatment facility in the golf course into this orange multi-use trail line. And also a trailhead facility south of our industrial park. And potential uh, additional connections into the southwest annexation area. Because I have a master plan for trail connections.
What are you doing to cross Geneva?
To cross Geneva?
Yes. Uh, that's going to be a really busy road.
Oh, sure, sure. We, we haven't even begun to cross that bridge yet. A metaphorical bridge. Uh. Yeah, and once the connection is, yes, we need to start studying that intersection safety right now. Signalize intersection. Into the transit facility. There at bus station and the front runner. Um, but yeah, we certainly need to look at how to upgrade that connection to ensure. A higher volume of pedestrians and cyclists, which we have not started yet. Uh, a lot of our, going back to this map. We've done some local coordination with Vineyard to ensure that. Our trail system is linking up to their trail system. Uh, we did a few general plan amendments a few years ago to ensure that we would connect into their rail trail. Uh, so as we do future improvements, they're only just little tiny. Less than quarter mile sections. Uh, that if we improve, we will link into their vast network of trails that we think is real benefit. Um, you know, so eight hundred north. It's a line here. This is primarily completed. In Orem, there's a section right here that we completed with UDOT's help. Uh, a block by the hospital this last year. There's still one more block that needs to. Needs completion and that multi-use trail will be completed up to Geneva Road. As Vineyard completes their section. It will tie into Utah City, the worst named city in the uh neighborhood in the world. Um, sorry.
This is not even a city.
Well, I just think people are gonna la- label their, their mail. Such as such street Utah City. That doesn't exist as a city. It should be, I just think is a post office disaster, but that's, that's just my side comment.
Vineyard City. Utah City. I, I totally agree with you.
Sorry, can I help you with that? Um, anyways, but as it connects into Utah City, that as a sub neighborhood of Vineyard. Uh, they'll also connect back into this lake toward shore. So I call this just amount, the mountain lake network. Uh, how do we complete these segments? A few segments to complete to have a full functioning three and sixty degree. Uh, trail network throughout Orem City to the mountains and, you know, some of that has to go through Provo or Vineyard, but. It'd be a complete network for our three cities. Uh, one project that we, as we looked at this initial plan, looking for lower hanging fruit. Um, lower hanging meant shorter. Uh, or less hurdles. Uh, we start. We identified this section here. Uh, from the Bonneville Shoreline Trail to the Murdoch Canal Trail. Um, you'll see it on this simplified map under this purple line. Uh. Our working title for it is the Bonadock Link. It's a combination of Bonneville Shoreline and Burdock. Cause we thought the Birdville Trail was not marketing material. So, uh, Bonadock Link is the working title. We do have a grant to help. Uh, fund this and it'll be under construction in the next year. Uh, this will consist of two parts. Where the blue line is, which actually was originally planned as a, just a bike facility. Uh, we actually will be putting in a ten-foot multi-use path from the Murdoch Canal Trail. To Cascade Drive, about a quarter mile long. And then. The remaining distance. Will be a um, separated facility. One half will just be share markings for those that have the stamina. To ride up Cascade Drive. I do not. Um. But. He, there'll be a, most of this area along. Cascade Drive is Orem City controlled, which is why we chose this site. Uh, we'll have a pedestrian and bicyclist. Routes paved, not paved, um, natural surface. Trails and then we are partnering with this section is the um. Metro Salt Lake and Sandy Met- Metropolitan Water of Salt Lake and Sandy. Uh, but they have agreed in exchange for a few improvements that they've requested. And he just went throughout through their portion up until the existing Bonneville Shoreline Trail. So this will create a connection between these two highly utilized trail. Sections, people are already using it and we'll just formalize it in a true facility. Uh, this is the initial preliminary plan. We will be making some adjustments. To this section with more switchbacks. For the bicy- uh, mountain cyclists to level out the grade and also separate them from downhill cyclists from. Pedestrian foot traffic. Cause they like to get. Fancy. Um, like I said, we'll start construction on this within the year, so. See, and this grant also funds some additional trailheads. So there's a preliminary plan, not the final, which we're working out the details on the final. Hoping that we'll be able to afford a pavilion, additional lighting and security measures. Additional shade trees and some other improvements to put the trailhead. Uh, right now it has some issues of vandalism. And hopefully if we can create more of an established presence. We'll have eyes on the street. Usually uh, increased activity does recreate decreased crime. And then we'll also be installing fiber optic for camera security as well. And as part of, uh, part of our efforts is what this project is introduce. Standard trail signings, which has been implemented in other communities. Um. Ag, Mountainland Associate Government tooks. Um. The Jordan River Trail concept for. Trail wayfinding, design and signage. And has applied the standard to a countywide standard that we're hoping to implement with our own city branding and. Uh, but it will, as you cross jurisdictions. You won't have to reinterpret. It will be the same type of format, design. And uh, should translate jurisdiction to jurisdiction. And so we'll be implementing this in the Bonadock Link as well. All right, uh, some people have brought North Union Canal. We've talked about this for a very long time. This uh, this graphic comes from a study done in two thousand nine. Looking at the canal right away or easement. As it really is and um, the various widths. Uh, feasibility wise, there's enough width to do that. Uh, it's a continued discussion. We don't have any. Formal plans to move forward at this point. We are actively talking about how do we do next steps? If this to become a real project or not.
What happens to the fence that surrounds that currently?
The fences will probably stay. It's everything within. The easement that we're talking about. Uh. How, how does any type of trail system? Actually go in there and what, and right now, right now we're studying the hurdles. What are the biggest hurdles? To actually trying to do anything with this in either a complete or phased approach over time. So.
You know, one issue is some people do not own property, but they've put their fence out there. And so if somebody's put their fence on property they don't own. You know, at the end of the day, uh, it's not their property.
Right. No, there's, the reason, the background of my question is. My little brother drowned in that canal. And the fence was put up shortly after. To keep kids in that neighborhood, in the Sharon Park area neighborhood, away from the canal. So the question's a personal one. You know, how do you keep kids out of the canal if you have a trail right next to it? It would be over.
Well, this trail would actually pipe the canal if it remained.
Like the Murdoch.
So that's, I was just trying to.
Cause there are spots where the only width is the canal.
Yes.
Fence is right on top of it. Got it. Now, where I grew up. I grew up right next to the canal, up twelve hundred north. Fences were right on the edge of the canal. And uh, you know, technically the easement, so the property for both sides actually is the, in the canal, but they have an easement for the canal.
Okay, track it, thank you.
Yeah, so this is very, so much in the study. Phase still, um. At this point, we're looking at identifying major. Hurdles so that we can then identify low and high hanging fruit and, you know, if we do. Try to move forward on this, you know, one that's going to involve additional public outreach and discussions. So we want to plan that appropriately. But also how do we phase it in a way that makes sense that um. And that's the, that's where we're at today with that. It's just studying that issue.
I think it's a good idea. I see one of the big hurdles is the junctions across center and eight hundred north.
Yeah, UDOT is definitely gonna have to partner with us on eight hundred north. That, that may, eight hundred north is probably the biggest hurdle.
It's the busiest road, highest traffic volume. Probably. Considering how fast speeds are, you're not going to get an intersection. You're gonna have to do a skywalk or something.
But I just threw this on, if, you know, if we looked at this as a backbone facility, what would it look like under the sort of backbone idea? And, you know, uh, one parallel I realized when I was looking at just the other day is how much a parallel state street. And could be a much more pleasant, low-volume alternative to that sort of northwest to southeast. Traffic flow for bicyclists and pedestrians and it's really. Less than a half mile off of that road, so it could be a viable. Uh. Commuting alternative. If you didn't want to rave. Uh, some of the busier roads, so. Anyways, that's sort of my overview of trails and where we're at today, what we're working on. Um. It is sort of contingent upon grant funding and. And working where there's opportunities and. But uh, we are starting to chip away at it more proactively.
What is the uh, driving force to make it happen? Is it you doing that or is, who, who brings the pressure to bear to?
I think it comes from all sorts of different angles. Uh, you know, North Union Canal is. You know, been. Some discussions. Much higher than me that have said, Matt, we need to look at this again. Uh. On the Bonadock Link was something that I threw out there a couple of years ago that. There were some potential grant funding. I said, hey, this might be a good opportunity to grab for some grant funding. Um. And, you know, chip away at this, this. Really big master plan at least. Um.
At the end of the day, there needs to be public support for it.
Yes.
If you're asking internally.
Yeah.
Uh, I am a huge fan of the idea of the North Union Canal. That's something personally, I would like to. Uh, move the idea forward enough so that. The community, the council can ultimately make decisions. If, just a little FYI, just, just uh, Google High Line, New York City. I think this could be.
I've seen that.
It's elevated. It's elevated. It's an old railroad right of way that went down to the Meatpacking District.
I've walked that.
Yeah, and so they were gonna vacate that. Those railroad tracks and that easement in the city turned it into an elevated walking trail. And. With this canal, there's an opportunity for us to look at. There's, there's a lot of hurdles and I can't say it's gonna happen. But I think it's worth the discussion as, as the community.
I think it strengthens the neighborhood.
Yeah.
By having those kind of uh. Amenities in the area. It's obviously conducive to the neighborhoods we have, so.
Yeah, and, and people will have concerns that will need to be understood and addressed and. But I think these types of things, if you're asking internally. There's, I think there's a lot of uh, interest throughout the entire organization. And Orem City. To develop these ideas and concepts enough so that the public and council can ultimately make decision. Because it's not going to be for free. You know, if you, I think so. We're also looking at it, uh, if it's a trail, what other. Things could we have for it? Could it be a utility corridor or, or? You know, for things like that, how can that fit in long-term plans for multiple areas of the city?
Look to the southern canals at all?
Uh, a li- little bit, not as much as this.
I know they're not as nice and extensive, but.
Yeah.
A little more switched back and.
I just wanted to add one thing to your question, uh, is, and I said, yeah, you know, taking. That Bonadock Link and tying it to a potential grant source is something. I worked on early, but honestly, that idea wasn't ultimately initiated by public feedback. So as these plans were produced. There were public meetings. They did actually pretty extensive survey. Uh, the consultant that worked on this plan. Inquiring of the public, what are your top priorities? I forget the exact number. I can look it up in a second, but. Like over half of Orem residents said that trails were their number one priority. And out of that, that planning process came this map. From this map, I said, okay, of all these things that the public identify, what could we potentially do that's low hanging fruit to get started? So ultimately, the question has been public impact. That was ratified by the city council when this plan was adopted.
It seemed to me that we will have a more complete trail system. Than any of the neighboring communities. I can't, I mean, what do I know about that? But. It just seems like we have a plethora of possibilities.
To me, it's, that's more of a true trail system rather than a wide sidewalk next to a road. Like eight hundred north, it's just a big sidewalk.
Sure.
We can call it a trail, but. It's just right by traffic. I, to me, trails are something that are detached from. You know, regular travel. So the North Union would fit that. The Murdoch does fit that, even though it skirts try. Roads from time to time, but. Uh, so I, I think it's. I think it's better tied to the community because it's a little quieter and.
Sure. Yeah, I, I would agree, you know, the more separation you have from regular traffic ultimately becomes a much more pleasant experience.
Yeah.
But we're also working in a largely built-out environment.
Very true.
So. Have to connect things. If we want to make it a viable network and the more network there is, the more likely people are going to use it. Cause then get to point A to point B, right? Uh, and that's going to be very varied depending on the user's interests and life. So, you do look for any opportunity in Orem. Connectings up through some type of facility that makes people feel comfortable. Um, there are different types of users and therefore different types of at, what, you know, we call active transportation, biking, walking. Um, you know, the commuting road cyclist warrior. He's okay, uh, hugging the shoulder with no bike lane sometimes, right? Or that's never going to work out for. Um, a mom with two kids on a trailer, right? So we need to consider all user types in this venture. Uh, you know, mom, even a dad, sorry, cause I, I was the one that took my kids in the trailer. Not the mom, but uh, yeah, but I would be a little braver maybe than some people and take my kids into a regular bike lane. Yeah, I did. But most people would not feel comfortable with that, right? And so. Uh, that's where the gr- uh, the separated multi-use bike lane with pedestrians and bikes can share a space. Way from the road is essential to attract as many users as we can. Also, the commuting cyclist is not, is less likely to use that. They rather, they rather brave it out with traffic. And share the space with slow-moving pedestrians and kids on bikes and stuff. So when we look at these maps, we're considering all these different types of users.
And that raises a, a, a point and I think it, it, it ought to be considered. So trails and, and this, the trails planning that we have going on kind of fits into two areas of the general plan. In the recreation, which we're talking about now, as a cultural recreational amenity, but it's part of the transportation network too. As, as transportation changes and it's not just people in cars. Um, some folks are going to use these the way Matt's talking about right now. And some are going to use them recreationally. So it's going to figure in both of those chapters, I think. To the extent that we focus on one aspect or the other in the different chapters, so. The, the full. Full plan will be, you know, it's going to be part of the active transportation plan, but it's part of the parks and recs. Master plan as well.
And I think to Jerry's point, one reason they are all part of one plan is because when we look at these. Trail connections. Yeah, there's ideal. And then there's, well, we gotta work with what we got. And as we analyze both of those, we're also looking at key destinations. You can build a trail, just gets low hanging fruit, but if it doesn't serve any particular purpose. It still might be lower on the priority list than maybe a slightly more difficult project that connects up, say for instance. The city center block with the Sira. That's, that's going to be a harder project. That's, that's gonna be a harder project, but they are two key large. Uh, public facility areas, which may be very beneficial to link up through some type of active transportation network. It'll be a harder project, but it serves a much more viable function.
That's another point that we've been talking about as we, as we've been looking at these things internally is those, are those connections between. The facilities that we have that are cultural and recreational and, and how those, those are gonna figure into this plan as well. Uh, or, and remember, this is the general plan, so it's goals about these things. We may not have funding mechanisms in place yet. We might have a hard time finding those. Doesn't need to keep us from identifying places that are important like, like what Matt was just talking about.
Um, well, if I could build off that, this Bonadock Link Trail, had this not been on our plan. We wouldn't have been eligible for grant money for it.
That was a big component, right?
Yes, when, when the states look into fund projects, they want to see community support. They want to see legislative support and that's usually expressed in these plans.
It's one thing for us to know we want it, but it's another thing for us, for the funders, it's another, for the grant people, it's, it's, it has to be part of the adopted plan, not. Something we want.
Sure.
So it's good to have it in.
Even the far-fetched, um, I think a great example that is not, well, it does have trail component, but like few Parkway and Provo. Uh, but she also has a multi-use trail along it. Um, I can remember for when I first started working at city until the recession. That was sort of a pipe dream. It's been on the master plan for twenty years or more. Uh, there was no funding for it. Uh, the recession hit, the Obama administration made sure. Right, a, the name of that rescue package was.
Shovel ready project.
Shovel ready projects. And because that was, that pipe dream plan was in the plan, it qualified for that money. And, and now we have that connection, so. Sometimes you do plan for the unfunded or impulse.
Great. Any other questions about trails as they figure in? Or stuff that we want to talk about there? Or connections in general too, that are kind of related to trails. That's one of the things we want to look at is. How, how easy is it for folks in Orem? This will lead into the next part of the conversation, I think. How easy or how hard is it for, for families in Orem to access the facilities that we have? Um, if you wanted to take a bike ride and end up at a park, can you do that from, from different places?
Identifying different spaces within the city that may be park deficient.
Sure, and that, that's a big, that's a big component as well. Um, we were talking about this earlier, parks. Parks cost money, so there's, but again, we have to, we can't get what we haven't identified, so. It's, it's an important part of the planning to look at what's deficient, whether we can afford to fund it or not, is not necessarily. The most important consideration, it's identifying what's needed and then identifying the most important. The next best thing we can do will be what we find, so.
The rest is down just because of property doesn't generally make sense either.
It won't necessarily.
Where people need it, right?
Right.
If I have to take a car to get to a park. In a certain area of town, then that's probably more conducive to think about trying to build that area.
Sure, sure. Um, yeah, because then the, the more, the more we can, we can, we want to see utilization of those parks, um. The kinds of things we, we want to talk about too, I'm just gonna just pull up. We can talk about what's in the, in the draft right now of this chapter. Um, it's active on that shared Google Drive. Um, there's some notes in there right now. We are actively looking at, at combining public, we're gonna call it public recreational and cultural. Amenities feels like an overused word. We were looking for another word. So if anyone has any brilliant suggestions other than amenities. Please suggest it. Uh, services. Assets, we don't know. Amenities is the word that we've got so far. It's kind of a draft. Um, but we, we'd like to combine those into a single chapter in the interest of keeping this, this general plan. Sort of compact and concise and not having extraneous chapters that put readers off. Um, the first part of that is simple. Um, one of the things that we kind of hope to do today was look at the, the existing parks. That we have just on the large map. And as you think about the parks that you're familiar with in Orem and the different cultural facilities that we have. Playhouses in the Sierra and things like that. What kind of feels, if, are, are there things that feel missing? Are there kinds of things that we don't have that we ought to have? Um, those kind of things, so I'll push this over this way. Okay, so as an exercise, when you think about parks in Orem, what's the first one that comes to your mind? Just in general?
Windsor.
Windsor Park.
I grew up there.
Okay, yeah. Anybody else?
I watched him build it.
Alice Park. Sierra, yeah.
Yeah, spent a lot of time there in Iceville.
Nielsen's Grove, Sierra Shell. Uh, the shell or the park around, or the?
Park next to it.
Next to it. Park around it.
It's a, it's kind of a small park. Between the school and the shell.
And what's that called? The Sarah Park?
Yeah.
It is Sarah Park, right? Is it Sarah or Sierra? Someone needs to determine this for me eventually.
Sarah.
Sarah.
There's no A.
Yeah, that seems right to me. I, I hear that a lot. It seems like it should be Sarah, Sierra to me.
It's an acronym for something. I forget what it is.
Sharon Community, whatever.
Entertainment and Recreation.
Association.
Is it entertainment or education and recreation association?
It's educational, education, recreation association.
Yeah.
Established in like the thirties.
Yeah.
Very cool. So Nielsen's Grove, too.
Sad that the water fountain is.
Sharon Park was, was one of my favorites growing up.
What, what made that influence you, Mike? Is, I mean, just.
The hills, the little amphitheater next to the canal.
I didn't realize there was an amphitheater in there. There's an amphitheater in Sharon.
It's a small little stage, you know?
I've got one kind of. Madeline and I were talking the other day about parks and open space and it is the kind of the parks and, um. We're calling it parks and open space in the chapter, but open space is part of our, kind of our, our look at parks as well. Um, and we were talking about different parks and open space and whether there's a need for. Open spaces that are less programmed versus more programmed parks. Parks departments tend to be, oh, hi, Madeline, thank you. So now you, so now you know if I'm lying about our conversation. Parks departments tend to be more focused on programmable space, on programmed space, on, on, on the amphitheaters and things like that, but there is. There is some merit to open spaces that are just enjoyed like off the side of trails when trails. Go through wide spaces, some of the Jordan River Trail, for example, there are areas of the Jordan River Trail system that are, I don't know, half a mile wide. They're just nice, big, open, kind of wild feeling spaces and the only programmed thing in it is that. We, I'm familiar with a park too that we, a city that I worked for had a park that they were always trying to. Always trying to program. It was a hillside full of um vines and scrub oak. And two picnic tables at the bottom of the hill where kids mostly smoked marijuana, but they were, it was near a police station, so some of that was starting to add. Um, but it was, it was pretty, and it was called Wildland Park and they, they, they eventually decided to leave that alone. Although they, um, they did put in a couple of lights to keep it a little, a little safer, but they. Uh, they backed off of programming it because people really enjoyed in the community when we had a little meeting about it. They really enjoyed that it was just kind of. Nature space, natural space. Um, and even, even programmed parks can have sections that are just sort of left more naturally in them. Um, we can talk about that in the general plan. I don't know if that's, that's just a concept that I've been thinking about lately and that we were talking about, so I thought. I'd bring that up. Does that have merit? Is that the kind of thing we want to look at in new parks? Are we more, as a city of this many people, is our obligation more for the. The kind of cultural amenities that we need programmed into the park system? Just as, this is just general guidance as we're drafting stuff, so just for information and thoughts.
There's always a need for just open space to do, right?
Sure.
I don't know how, how busy are the pickleball parks? That's something you always have to take into account if they're always booked.
Yeah, we do. We do. And for, we have the Parks Master Plan up here as well. That's where we're at actually, and this isn't it. This isn't the general, this, this map's in the Parks Plan, not the general. Um, for purposes of our general plan section, we're gonna be pretty, pretty high-level, broad about, about these kinds of issues and they're just gonna be. Goals about um helping to connect people to the parks better or, and how do we do that? And we'll have some action items for those things. Um, how to, uh, how to bring in. Or fund uh different programs and things like that. And that's all gonna be more detailed in the Parks Master Plan. It was twenty twenty-one. So we're gonna try to match the, the goals and, and objectives of that current plan with what we say in the general plan segment.
I think it says we need thirty-seven more acres.
Thirty-seven more? But does it define like where, and this is the heat map for that, where they need to be.
Yeah, so this map goes in and looks at the park. And for a level of service that a community provides and whatever it is, including parks. You draw uh circles around a quarter mile, half mile, then the different type of park it is. Like the lake, uh, uh, Lakeside uh Sports Park. Is a regional park to have regional activities. That's one that we wouldn't. Build just to have people locally walk to it. And enjoy it. It's, it's a draw for the entire county. And outside the county to come in and we hold big events. Then you have other little parks in the city that's really just a local park, a more. You know, localized beyond that little neighborhood, not many people would ever go to that park. And, you know, and then you have something that's kind of uh in between, uh, like a hill crest. Where you do have some pickleball courts and, and if you talk to the pickleball players, we could have expanded. Twice as many to the east and decked it and there still wouldn't have been enough pickleball courts.
Windsor with a basketball court.
Yeah, you know, and so that's not, we're not holding na- uh, regional events there. But it's more than just a local neighborhood. So part of the analysis that you. Really, I would suggest is not just look at our section of the general plan. But look at the Parks Master Plan. Do you remember? The general plan kind of gives a general overview of what we want in parks and then with the details found. In the Parks and Recs Master Plan. So it'd be good to have uh read that and look at it. We don't want to, because it'll get into more specific areas and like Dave was talking about. This level of service of how many more acres of park do we need? You know, it'll go in there and analyze, you know, how much, how much of acreage do we need? What type of space is that? Is that citywide, regional, local, where in the city do we need some things? And so take a, take a, a good look, hard look at this plan also. And if you need, we could get somebody from the Parks Department come in and talk more about. This park plan and they have active uh improvements that they're continually making. So we don't want to get necessarily into the weeds of, of uh. Of, you know, oh, we need five acres in southeast Orem between, you know. Something like that, but we do want to have those high-level, you know, what kind of principles behind parks. If from a general plan standpoint, do we think a community would need?
I'm impressed. Amazing how much thoughts got into this. I don't know, uh. Uh, what you could really do better than what's been done. I mean, the analyses, what's been laid out, it's.
It's, the, the master plan is great and in place and we probably just want to reflect. Those better principles in our, in our general plan.
And, and that's one thing that we're trying to do is make our general plan a little more concise. But yet then rely on the underlying master plans for parks. For uh transportation, active transportation to flesh out the details of those things more.
Well, then, then could you have too many parks? I mean, it costs money to.
Maintain them.
Maintain them, yeah.
Thirty-seven acres, a lot of parks.
It's a lot of park. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and you know, part of it with this also is. You know, that balance that you're talking about. Can you have too many parks? Well, my answer to you is. Is how much you're willing to pay. The, the analogy I always like to give people is.
Yeah.
Is, and it's a far-fetched ridiculous one is people will complain about speeding in their neighborhood and I said, well, I can guarantee no speeding. In, in, in Orem, absolutely guarantee it. What I need is we have three shifts of police officers and I need a police officer for three shifts at every intersection.
Yep.
And we will prevent all speeding. But that cost is pretty high. So where do you bring down the cost and knowing, well, somebody's gonna speed sometime somewhere, we're not gonna catch them. What's the right balance in the community?
Well, and that's true, that's true with about any, any element of the city, lighting, uh.
Yeah.
Sidewalks, uh, everything. And it seems to me that people have good ideas, bring them forth and. And some people show no restraint. They just figure, well, it's on the table, we better improve it and move forward. And uh, I'm always concerned about uh the increase in taxes.
Well, I always love spending with people.
Most government does.
That's my hobby.
Well, if any of these thirty-seven acres, you know, I realize that's the grandiose target. Has any of that been programmed? In any kind of budget forecast?
Hill Crest was the last one, right?
True.
No, I mean, Wokes and Farm would have been a nice one, but that's.
He was also looking at further expansion. If we annex further to, like we were looking at the southwest Orem plan. Like, what do we do with that long term? Like, if we annex some of that lakefront, that can all become open space. Acreage that doesn't have to be all programmed, but could be nature, so it can be included in that. And those are kind of some of the things to be thinking about too, are kind of where we have holes. And what we might need to be saying, hey, we need more of X, so.
We didn't any analysis on um specialty needs, park specialty needs, like we have one skate park.
There's a, a, there's a bike skills park planned for up near that Bonadock Trail uh connection. That Matt was showing you. That's, that's the one that springs to mind first. Other than that, I don't know if there's been a lot of analysis of that. I, I couldn't tell you. It might have been. I'm not aware of it.
Yeah.
I'm just barely dipping my toes in this.
Windsor Park was my skate.
Yeah. Unofficial skate park.
We used it more than tennis players, so. Sharon Park. I did as a kid, when I learned to skate, it was just down the road. That tennis court was great for.
His range increased.
There you go, the skateboard.
Actually, Windsor was always closer, but when I was little, I built Sharon Park when I was in uh third grade. So we went to Sharon because there was no Windsor when I was little. So I just have lots of good fond memories of that as a kid. But, you know, it was just, just half, half a block away to get to.
Play baseball, right?
Yeah.
City center?
Oh, yeah, I liked city center, but I, that never felt like a park because of the baseball.
Well, with these parks.
Different mentality.
I was determined how well-used they are. It's really sort of a.
I'm sure there's data on that that we can get, the same way that we use placer data for, for businesses. It tells you when people have been in parks. We could bring somebody in from parks, like Gary was saying, it might be really interesting to see which are the, the most highly utilized and things like that. Uh, that's something that'd be interesting for you all to know. Let's, let's do that.
We have those numbers.
About us.
That's aren't they?
They're just vaguins.
Eskimos though, right?
Uh, since we don't.
No, not.
People coming through.
No, no, we, we have, uh, uh, we use placer AI. Which will tell you, you know, I could tell you how many. Uh, individual people came to the city center last month. You know, with, with that data. So we, we have a pretty good idea of how much. Um, it's used and that's always the, the question, right? Is you have a park there, is the park worth it if, you know, one percent of the. Population of Orem uses it a year? Is that park worth it?
Then there's the question, is it the same few people that come to the park or is it abroad?
Yeah, and we can, we can, can uh. There's that out.
Things like that.
Well, if people, yeah, I'm sure you can market things, but are people really interested in using the park? I don't know. Well, I remember the place that at Windsor, the old wood one, people stopped using it. The Morris splinters became prevalent. And then when they put the new one, I noticed that seemed to be about taking usage again. So that's my point. Sometimes you can analyze. There's a reason people aren't bringing their kids to play on that place that because it's a little beat faded. And uh, sometimes, you know, it's just an indicator we need enough. And then the uh kids that use parks that like to, you know, amenities there, they they get older and oh, that's still.
Well, parks are cyclical, right? We have, like, I mean, even in our family, you know, there was the time we were taking the kids all the time.
Yeah.
And now they've outgrown it.
Yeah.
And the only time we, you know, if we go to a park, it's because I'm going to do photography or walking by the lake or you know, or something like that. So the needs change and it's different in the different stages.
Hill Crest Park has a splash pad. Now, how many of you this summer went and played in the splash pad? Did you? What's wrong with you people?
I wasn't in a Hill Crest splash pad, but I was in a different splash.
Okay, I I haven't been to a splash pad in decades. This summer I went probably eight times.
To the Hill Crest Park Splash Pad?
Yeah, because my grandson was in town.
Yeah.
He's two and he loves it.
Yeah.
He's a huge fan of it. So if you ask a lot of people and that's one of those things, how do you balance that? It it's a big cost to put in a splash pad. Now, none of you use that splash pad, I would imagine. I did the summer and it was great, but you know, maybe next summer I won't use it at all. So is it worth having it?
That's the question.
Depending on the usage and and what segments of our community are we trying to get? That's that's the really hard policy question at the end of the day.
But then it changes, it changes.
Yeah.
The same argument for school. You know, in an older community, do we get rid of all of them because we don't have kids using them extensively or anything? It's also.
Or, yeah, and how 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 much of how nice and what amenities do you put into the school? Or do you dial some of that back and focus on other things? And there's lots of opinions.
It seems like there's been a large overlap between schools and parks. So people go school, park and play. Now, it seems like there's more fencing now that's been built to segregate the two, but I'm not sure just.
Yeah, and part of that's been some federal regulations and things like that. And state regulations dealing with school security.
Yeah.
And like Sarah Park, uh, what's the school there called? Next to Sarah.
Centennial.
Centennial. Yeah, it'll always be Sarah Park Elementary to me. I mean, that's but it's a different name now. Now that has a fence
Yeah.
between the park and the school. Uh, when I was a kid and went to what it should be called, which is Sarah Park Elementary, there was no fence. And the whole thing functioned all the time as one big community amendment.
Same with Windsor and Windsor. Or or elementary, the same thing.
Yeah, same in or.
Ball fields, there's a now I've fenced that off, so.
So what we're talking about suggests if we're going to do it properly, then we need to factor in the cyclic nature of neighborhoods.
Yeah, I don't think uh frankly, that's the role of the planning commission.
I'm talking about the city.
Yeah, but in the Parks Master Plan. Now, I think the role of the it it would do that and take that into account. I think the role of the planning commission would be to when we look at parks, we should consider the cyclical nature of population and neighborhoods as they age and then regentify and things like that. I think that's a great concept. Because then the next time we update a Parks Master Plan, what we should be doing in the Parks Master Plan is going to look at that language in the general plan saying, okay, when we hire a consultant, this is the, this is an aspect of it we want you to look at to get the answers that we need in this more detailed plan.
And one quick comment, having read the Parks Master Plan in the last month, that a lot of this is here. It is actually a really good layout of what we need, what the demographics are, what all this sort of stuff is, you know, and and going through and pulling out and saying, okay, what are the real overall arching goals? Again, like I said, what are some of the arching goals that we're missing? Our of open space is maybe we need to beef up open space if, you know.
Needing more skate park amenities, biking amenities.
Absolutely. But I mean, as we and as we look at the Family City USA and we think of what we need, some of these things might not be.
Honestly, we need some little uh football areas too. I mean, we have open fields, but we've never actually specified them for football areas. We use the city. The the diamonds, the outside of the diamonds for some of these football games all the time, but we actually never dedicated space.
And if you look through it, also do note that a lot of the things it suggests to do have been done. There's been a lot of updating to the parks, especially over COVID. Things that were suggested there, a lot of it has been done too. So just kind of, if you do look at it, keep that in mind. Are you gonna?
I think we need to.
We need to.
Our uh main meeting is at five thirty. We have four minutes, so.
How's it going?
Gentlemen. Okay, we will call this meeting of the Pla- Orem City Planning Commission to order at five thirty on November nineteenth, twenty twenty five in the um city council chambers here in Orem. And we will begin with an invocation by Commissioner Skar.
Our Father in Heaven was so grateful for all the blessing he blessed our city with, was so grateful for uh this council and and the city planning department and all the work they do. And we so grateful to be a country that we live in. We appreciate it and we know the blessings that were given and we ask you to guide us today uh to do what's right for the city, for the citizen in the city, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. So we'll begin with item three point one, which is our consent agenda item, which is approval of minute approval of minutes from the November fifth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a motion on that?
Uh, I move that we approve the uh Orem City Planning Commission uh consent agenda items.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, second.
Rod beat you. So Mike moved and Rod seconded that we approve the consent agenda items. Hazem?
Hi.
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 The consent agenda items are approved or item. And then we will go to item four point one, which is a preliminary plat. It's a Pearson subdivision located generally at two thirty three South, four hundred West. Jared?
Thank you. Um, this is a, as you said, a preliminary subdivision uh request for a two lot residential subdivision. I know what you're thinking right now. There are already two lots here. And you're right, there are two parcels here, but they've never been part of a subdivision before. Um, our code dictates then that we need to record a plat and correctly make these part of a subdivision. Because they want to change these lines right here to be different and have most of the property associated with the existing home and a new lot that's buildable made in this corner here. That's the, that is the nickel tour version of this project. I'll give you the slightly longer version right now. Okay, so it's one point one three acres. There is an existing home. Um, in the staff report, you might have noticed it talked about a historic cabinet. It's being used as a shed right here. There's a historic building right there. Uh, these structures would remain and they will all become part of lot proposed lot one. Um, it is in two different zones. The majority of lot one, proposed lot one will wind up in the R eight zone that you can see the lighter yellow. Uh, all of lot proposed lot two will be in the R seven point five zone. Um, the way that our code reads, because most of lot one will be in the R eight zone, that's the zone that would dictate or or have control. Um, this plan shows you kind of the the proposed lot two. And if you remember from right here, it just kind of reverses what's happening on the properties right now. In the formal subdivision, it'll kind of reverse roles. So a smaller lot here, seven thousand nine hundred ninety two square feet gets created for lot two for a new exist, for a new home to be built uh in that zone. And then the existing home would occupy the larger forty three thousand six hundred twenty nine square foot lot one, proposed lot one. Um, the plat will also uh provide easements that are necessary. That's one of the reasons that we do it. Um, there have been some uh there'll be some changes for the easements for the final plat that are that make these these lot lines work. Uh, that's all been reviewed by the technical review committee and they've recommended approval, the T D R C or the D R C met uh and recommended that it be moved to the planning commission for your review. So uh, do you have any questions for staff at this point? These existing structures will all remain, by the way. It's not that the new home won't be built here just on the lot two. Any questions for staff?
I don't believe there are any questions.
I'm just curious, the rhyme or reason for the shed placement?
I I think that I think this this shed here, or do you mean?
That looks like an old house.
It this was a cabin. It predates the home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, you know, you look at where they are existing sheds.
Yeah. It's a little weird.
Randomly placed where.
It's organized the way I would organize things, Mike, and no one understands it, so it's okay.
Fair enough.
So, okay. Any further questions? Great, since this is an administrative item, we're the final deciders on this. So do we have a motion?
I move that the Orem City Planning Commission approve the request for preliminary approval for the Pearson subdivision plat.
Hey. Okay.
I second that.
Okay, Rod moved and Jim seconded that we approve the lot, preliminary plat. Uh, Jim?
Hi.
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 Okay, item four point one is approved. Okay, any other business?
We do actually have one other uh item of business we needed to bring up for you. It's not really a discussion necessarily, but uh Becca has some info for you.
Hello, can, oh, can you hear me? Okay, all right. So it is the the witching hour of commissions, um, the end of the year. So we're going to have to be looking at um, our calendar for twenty twenty six. Um, we have kind of something already put together, um, so we can email that out and get everybody looking at it, um, and then bring it forward to vote. Um, most likely on the on the final um planning commission of this year, as as long as everybody, or at least most of everybody is able to attend. Um, we also have a few other items. There's a, there's some training that we'll have to do um with everybody. Um, I'm assuming uh we could probably pick a work session to go over that. Um, it's just a state video that kind of talks about what you're like uh open, yeah, the open meetings and um that kind of stuff. Um, and then we'll also have to be looking at um reelecting the chair and vice chair. Um, so I'm assuming we could probably do the the calendar and the chair and vice chair um either on the last, the final December meeting, or we could do it um on the first of January.
Per our bylaws, it's the first meeting in January for when chair election is done.
Okay, awesome.
But yeah, we should do the calendar in December.
Yeah, okay, then we'll plan on that.
Want to do it at our next meeting just because as we get closer to Christmas, that might be a harder meeting. That's just my.
Yeah.
Lessly attended.
Yeah, lighter.
Lighter attendance.
Cool. Then we will fast track that and make sure it's it's ready for our next upcoming one.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there's, oh, do you have something, Garrett?
I do. Uh, December first is the lights on ceremony for uh the city center park here. Um, it's uh we affectionately call it our hall hallmark movie studio. Um, we have seven hundred thousand lights that'll be on uh come. It's Monday, December first. It starts at five, lights on. There'll be a little bit of a program. Lights on will be approximately uh five thirty. Uh, the uh Orem train will be there. All of you, if if you'd like to ride the train, I'll take your picture uh for you. There's just a lot of great activities. It's a wonderful community thing. And I believe uh in actual numbers, we were talking about some things. I I believe the number was eight thousand people were there last year. So it's it it'll be the best and uh production we've had. Uh, it's really exciting and there's free hot chocolate, by the way. So please come.
Is that at the pavilion or the amphitheater at the park?
Yeah, at the park over by the uh amphitheater uh and the pavilion. And there's going to be uh vendors and different things. So there's going to be a lot to see and do. It's, it'll be just a great community activity. So that's that's an opportunity. Consider it uh homework for the general plan of, you know, parks and what you use parks for and different things and how to grow community and build community. So it's a wonderful activity and hopefully you all can make it and bring family and friends because it's actually going to be pretty cool. I have uh kids coming from Salt Lake who are going to come down and go to it with us.
That's awesome. Thank you. Okay. All right, with no further business, we can have an emotion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mike moved and Rod seconded that we adjourn. Hazem?
Hi.
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 Okay, we're adjourned at five forty P M. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.